For twenty-two, two seven zero, still for the session for the study session to discuss potential code changes to the HPP appeals process.
I'm trying to.
Thank you Chair, we're, so the presentation wasn't loaded, but we're going to load that right now.
Don't tell IT we're passing flash drives, no.
No need, they're watching.
Hi Jason, how are you doing?
The next security training.
We'll be damned.
Have something about switching.
Right.
We've already had.
We're training, yeah.
Would you guys mind if I can help, help test it for me?
Yes, please.
Myself.
Good evening everyone, I'm Jim Beckland-Brook, if I may, Mr. Chair. I'm the city manager here, trying to wean myself off of saying new because it's gonna be six months in a few weeks, but I will still claim a little bit of newness occasionally, as we all should, you know.
Right, right.
I started a job in July and I still say I'm new.
See, that's where, yeah.
Yes, I'm still learning.
Started in July. But I'm excited to be here, you know, Littleton is a place that my family has known and that I was eager when I saw the opportunity for. I'm aware of how special it is and I'm eager to just to jump in. There's, as I've told people, there's, there's a lot going on, as this commission knows, this board knows. You know, and I'm trying to kind of stay up right on top of the wave and land some of the things, the things that have been in the works for some time while at the same time, learning the nature of the wave and, you know, who and what comprises that wave. So that's where I've been and I'm eager to be, to listen to the board's discussion tonight about appeals and, you know, I've been learning more and more about the ULUC and had a really good coffee conversation with Rick one day about history of HPP. So I'm just eager to, to listen and help to, I think, you know, bring the board along with the council and our staff together over time so that we can work together in this case for both, you know, historic preservation, but I know that in Littleton, that is economic progress too. So that's, that's who I am.
I'm welcome.
It's great to have you here.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. We like doing code stuff on this board.
We do, we actually do.
We do, yeah.
We just actually make for yourself.
We did a lot.
We did a lot on ULUC. Yes, we had ten meetings, hours and hours of discussion.
I'll mention I had, I had a really fun walk too with Kim. We gonna have to go now, today got a Friday to learn about the city ditch and history there, so.
It's great.
It was great, we had a beautiful sunny afternoon, you just couldn't beat it.
Better than this week's weather.
Yes.
Well, we're rich in culture.
And beauty, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful city too.
Today, see my red socks off.
Was it beautiful today?
I go out.
Because you know you're not golfing the rest of the week.
Yeah, you're right.
We're all by yourself.
I am, I will.
I don't know who's.
We're just about set, we've got it on the computer. Could we get the screen on the computer, please?
Almost there. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so tonight our subject is code changes related to board and commission, the board and commission appeals process. So council asked that we look into this, and well, actually directed us to look into this because there are some confusing aspects to our city code. Not just in the historic preservation section, but it spans several titles, it spans two titles and several different chapters within Title X. So you may be familiar with some of this already, but Title Two specifies that all board and commission decisions are appealed to the court system. And what that means is the quasi judicial decisions, those decisions that have an application process that are, you know, the, the board or commission can say, we'll approve or deny this, or, you know, approve it with conditions, that type of thing. But there, there's some discretion and there's an application process and there's a public hearing process. That generally means it's quasi judicial. Those decisions that are final can only be appealed through the court system. And these are, the Colorado RISE statutes has provisions for appeals to quasi, or governmental decisions basically, through the Rule 106 process is what it's called. And those are generally, did the board or commission use arbitrary or capricious decision making process to arrive at their decision? And here, Ashley, you just jump in whenever you want.
Doing great.
But basically, that's what it sets out in Title Two of the code. Once you get to Title X, which we just revised a couple of years ago now, it talks about a little bit of a difference and really the, the Board of Adjustment and the City Council have that final decision making authority. And then Planning Commission decisions and the, and the historical, the Historical Preservation Board, those decisions could be appealed to City Council or the Building Board of Appeals, there's a few others. So, but we're really, in this process, we're really looking at the Building Board of Appeals, the Board of Adjustment, the Historical Preservation Board and the Planning Commission. Essentially, it talks about the Planning Commission, the Building Board of Appeals and the Historical Preservation Board decisions being able to be appealed. It gives a timeframe in one section and a list of who can, who can appeal decisions. And then as you read through a little bit farther, you get to the Historical Preservation Board section, it talks about a different timeframe and a different set of who can appeal. So there's some cleanup work that we just need to do and council recognized this and directed us to do this sooner rather than later, to clear some of this up. But that is the, what we're aiming to do and the city manager's office, Jim, directed us to do study sessions to at least introduce this topic to particularly the Planning Commission, the City Council and the Historical Preservation Board. Although the Historical Preservation Board won't be doing any type of resolution recommending, you know, that's not part of what you do, but we've got the study session to sort of gather input on what you think about the appeals process and what direction we should go. We haven't made any official recommendations, but are interested in your, your feedback.
Mike, I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Before the ULUC, when the Historic Preservation Code was all in one spot, in Section Eight, was it, was it?
Yep. Title, yeah.
There wasn't a Section Ten, a Title Ten at that time. Title Ten came under when we created the ULUC. I'm trying to figure out where it was before because there, the old code, I think it was Section Eight, had all the, all the preservation stuff. And then when we did the ULUC, it ended up being split because of the administration requirements, appeals process. So it kind of broke the code up into two spots and now maybe ended up being three spots.
And I think the old code, I may be wrong about this, I think the old code, Title Four, the building code contained the Historical Preservation Standards. That was the old Title Four and, and Title Ten was the zoning code back then and Title Eleven was the subdivision code. You're right, they were, they were sound.
It wasn't in Ten.
Yeah, I think they were in Title Four.
I think there was this, maybe it was by itself in Section, Section Eight or something, I have all the old codes at home, I don't have.
Yeah, we got them online, I could look it up if we really need to know it, I could look it up.
But anyway, I'm just kinda, because I think that's what kind of caused some of these problems as we transitioned to a new process. Everybody was, like, in the beginning, sort of.
You know, we're, we're working on our, our way through several, several issues, but this one we do need to clear up for the citizens, for the board members, for the city council, for the applicants. We, we do need to work on this a little bit, make sure it's just clear, whichever direction we want to go. Basically, there's a couple of different directions that we could go with this. One being, you know what, Title Two had, had it basically right. We could, you know, these quasi judicial decisions, let that be the final decision and it can go to the court system for appeals. The other way we could, we could look at this is, well, board and commission decisions, maybe there's a benefit to having a city council, okay, so each board has their particular specialty. And city council has a broad perspective on, on the city and the welfare of the city and, and, and the whole. And, okay, Historical Preservation Board, we look at a particular set of standards. Is it worth it for a group, is that applicants, is that any interested party? Who is that to be able to appeal a decision of the Planning Commission or the Historical Preservation Board or the Board of Adjustment to City Council for a, a different viewpoint on, on that decision? So, and there's a kind of a mix of, of, you know, those are the two ends of the spectrum. In the past, there were certain decisions that, in particular, the Historical Preservation Board made that were appealable by the applicant to City Council. And those were certificates of appropriateness, certificates of economic hardship and certificates of. Demolitions, thank you. And even in the old code, those were, those were aspects that could be appealed to City Council. And there were, and I'm not sure what the reasoning was then, you know, does that reasoning still hold? These are the types of things that we'd like to gather your opinion on. And then we'll kind of move forward and that's, Jen can talk a little bit more about this, but I'll turn it over to her.
So in terms of when we first got the direction from council, it really stemmed from a Planning Commission appeal that happened, but that really opened up to, okay, we do have some other conflicts just besides the, the Planning Commission. This is when we looked at Title Two and it says all boards and commissions, quasi judicial decisions are, go to the courts. And then we have the section in our new Title Ten in Chapter Nine that talks about the appeal process for Historic Preservation Board and like Mike said, it's what we're used to. It's what has, has been, you know, since I've been here for the four years, that's, that's the way it has gone. We've had very few that have actually been appealed to council. Another unique thing with HPP and the way that's written, it is speci- specific to applicants. Applicants are the only one that can appeal. On Planning Commission side, a variety of different people can appeal, the way it's written right now. So really, what is the topic of conversation tonight? Do you want to go with the way you're used to or what Title Two says? We just need, we need to make it consistent. So when we talk about, okay, HPP, again, what Mike said of, you know, there is some value that City Council has a broader understanding of economic impact. That is not one of the criteria that HPP weighs, nor is it a criteria we would want to add to your set of criterias. But they have that broader knowledge of the housing needs of the city or the, the economic needs. Rick brought up a great point of, okay, what are the economic needs of the city? And we're really about to embark on an economic development strategy. And we made very sure in that RFP that went out that Historic Preservation was a huge aspect of our economic development strategy as a city. So that's kind of where the City Council could weigh in, that court would not have that local context on a decision.
At the same time, if I can add to that really quickly, Jen, and when you're looking at the code sections that were provided in the packet today with the highlights of where, where we're talking about, it's still important to note that, let's say with a COA, if this goes to council and it stays that way, council still, even if they have a broader sense of knowledge, they're still stuck to the same criteria in looking at the review process, right, the appeal process. So they're not adding their own criteria in, they just come from a broader sense, but the criteria is still the same. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that.
That's a good clarification. So, I'm gonna go to the next one. So again, should the HPP process stay the way it is, what we're used to, or make it agree with Title Two? So just wanted to open that discussion.
Was there, was there a public policy? I, I'm just wondering what the policy reasons are for one versus the other. In other words, is it, is, is there, is there a policy benefit to having the board decisions be final unless you go to the court and is the idea there that that's prohibitive enough that it makes decisions de facto final or is it, is it, I'm just trying to understand what the, what the policy reasons are for the two choices? If there's no answer, it's okay.
I told myself that I, that I was not gonna talk much, that I. Just a little, I, I can just, I think, bring to this table that the City Council, when they did work through the appeal recently regarding the Aspen Grove project, I think they realized that under the ULUC and the appeal process that was now going to apply to those projects, given the Planning Commission's role, that felt different to them than appeals had in the past. And I, I believe the council, you know, they were, as, as, as Ashley commented, bound by, you know, the same evidence, the same rules. It was their job really in that case to watch the video of the meeting because the only question for them in that case was really, did the Planning Commission have sufficient evidence to make the decision that they did? They weren't to consider new evidence, they weren't to have a hearing. So after, after we got through that process, you know, the council said, hey, you know, let's talk about how, let's talk about how that felt now. Because the ULUC is different, it's the first one of these that they'd had. And at least at the, the brief study session that they had, they said, you know, it didn't, you know, we, we weren't entirely, we're, we're not sure what our role, what, what value we added there was. You know, some of the proceedings were actually legally technical, we're not judges. I mean, the, instead of quasi judicial, I remember the city attorney saying, in this case, you are judicial. I'm not sure what that means, but it was impressive. It was different and so they, so, you know, that's when they said, well, let's look at this, you know, and just hear from the boards that were, that Mike referenced, that we're, you know, talking with, check in with their comfort on these, you know, these, all making the code consistent regarding the Rule 106 action or taking the, you know, appeals directly to the court system. Or, you know, would the boards have some, some rationale or reasons why they would like the, the council to be able to hear that first? Is that fair, Ashley?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think to add to that probably too, is City Council realized how time consuming it was? And again, they were placed in the role of judges, which, you know, may be awkward at times, but also may not be necessarily their comfort level or expertise level. At the same time, they can be advised to follow the same criteria you all do. Oftentimes, you know, obviously Planning Commission stuff is a very different beast than what you deal with in HPP when we're looking at the larger developments and having to determine who's an aggrieved party under our code. Is it, you know, someone that lives within a certain distance? Oftentimes, you know, that's, there's a lot of factors that go into that, that the court is going to consider off case law. Were you actually aggrieved? Were you actually impacted by this development versus you just don't like it, right? A little different with HP stuff because we've specifically written in the code, it's just the applicant. So it's much more straightforward if that were in front of council as far as who can bring the appeal. Clearly, they do have standing to bring it in our code. But on the flip side of that, I guess I would say, you know, you guys do have a very specific subject matter expertise under the criteria that maybe council doesn't, right? So all just things to weigh, I think the bigger thing is, is can we make it clear in our code so, you know, the applicant or any aggrieved party knows what to do, so council knows what to do. It doesn't change what you all are doing because your decision, you're still reaching it the same way, it's just what's happening after your decision. Is your decision final and therefore they can now appeal to the courts? Or is there one more step to go to council before it's final and goes to the courts?
Is it, is it correct to guess that, did I interrupt you, I'm so sorry?
Not good. Jason, then I go.
Oh, I, is it correct to guess though that, that, if the, if the whole, if the policy idea is that we want finality for the applicant as soon as possible, for whatever purpose? Is it correct to imagine that an appeal to council is faster than an appeal to court?
Well, then they would still have the built in, that's now your final decision if it's going to council and then they could still go to the court system. So it's actually slower to get to the court system, I guess, unless they got a favorable ruling in front of the council.
And is speed actually a policy, I mean, am I asking the wrong question?
I don't think it's a driving consideration. You know, I think the council, you know, wants to make sure that, that it feels solid and it feels, you know, defensible. But they also realize that their role in appeals can be limited, so, you know.
But valuable, I mean, they're trying to make sure, if I'm understanding what you're saying, their, their council is trying to make sure, was the rule applied fairly, period?
Right.
Like, you know, with.
Well, if, if, I, I think Ashley, even beyond fairly.
Accurately.
Was there the record in the hearing, was there sufficient evidence for the findings that were made?
Correct. It's not whether they agree with the decision or not, or they would have ruled differently, but was there enough on the record in front of you as a board to reach the decision you made?
Thank you.
And here's where the, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, okay, Chris.
I'm just wondering, how often have we had appeals from the HPP, like for decisions that the HPP has made?
There were two in the last five years, I think.
Yep.
I can remember a couple, yeah, I think there were two in the last five.
ATM machines.
Oh, it's the ATM situation, okay, I do recall hearing about that.
I'm trying to think of this any.
Okay.
I'm dying to know what that means.
I think there's been too many appeals.
I don't think there, but there were two in the last five years, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I'm all for consistency, absolutely, I'm just like, how often are we gonna deal with this, that it's, you know?
Hopefully not very often.
Yeah, like I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, when we get a COA, like we've had, you know, we've had quite a few in the past year.
Make your decisions, make good records, making sure you have enough to make your decisions.
And we've had, you know, good discussions with the applicant that, and, you know, we've asked questions and they've been able to answer them and, and so I feel like we're pretty thorough in that regard that, and, and that we've worked with the applicants in a, a positive way to, you know, come up with a good ending or a good decision for everybody involved. So, okay, I was just kind of curious, like if we're dealing with this on a regular basis.
No, we haven't.
But I, I agree, absolutely, we should have some consistency.
I, I think that, I just have a couple of observations and you know, in, in the past, Historic Preservation Board is different than Planning Commission. And we are dealing with an applicant and the applicant is the one that has standing, that can appeal the decision. And I think that to have an HPP decision be final and the next recourse is court, I'm wondering if that places an undue burden on the applicant because that is, you know, that costs money. And what we want to do is, you know, we, we want to make this accessible for applicants who are ordinary people, who own properties. And it, it, in my feeling, it, it almost feels too heavy handed. To say, that's it, and you don't have a any appeal within the city. Um, and I think that, you know, we we serve, you know, city council does. Um, look over our decisions and our recommendations as far as the historic district and everything like that. Um, I I think my preference would be that I think it's appropriate to go to to council. Um, I think that with this board and the way that we have tried to make all of our decisions. Um, it is, it, you know, context, local context, that that has. Context is a real word in historic preservation, and we we want. We always remember that we are dealing with somebody's private property. And the decisions that that we make need to be fair, and they need to be consistent. Not only within the the councils or the decisions that this board might make, but also, you know, for the next board. And the new members coming in and new staff members coming in, so that we are are looking at and evaluating. Properties, um, based on real standards, in our case, uh, one of the ones that we use. Um, is the Secretary of the Interior Standards, and those are, they're accessible to everybody at anywhere. I have to, is, you know, you you can get them from the federal government, you can get them online. Within, yeah, with an explanation, and you you can get a a paper copy, I'm sure, from the government printing office if you want it. But, uh, that way, everybody knows, you know, how the decisions are made, what the what the criteria are, how it works. Um, everyone has the same information, um, I think that it 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 really promotes fairness. It promotes consistency across the board, and, um, I I think that we should be comfortable with that decision making process. And quite frankly, council should be comfortable with it too, I like the idea that that you can appeal to council, that's my thought.
Well, the one point that Kim makes is consistency across boards. We happen to have a priorly the most qualified board the city's ever had on historic preservation, except maybe the first board. Uh, which is very good as well, but there are gonna be times when people are gonna be in this board that don't have preservation experience. And so they're got not gonna understand, the regulations are gonna be relying on the staff to make sure it's correct, so they can make the decision. Since it is, uh, heavily based on law, preservation's always been based on law right from the beginning. One thing that concerns me on COA appeals, we haven't had too many, but the economic conditions have changed in the city. And that's gonna put more pressure on remodeling some buildings and changes on buildings. Besides the growth that we, I mean, this board wanted more growth downtown than even the planning commission and the city council wanted. I mean, we saw growth was how we protect our historic structures, because they're used. But I know there's gonna be a lot of pressure, and that's gonna. That may put some of the appeal process, a COA in a in a political situation. And I can see something, from what I hear, there are potential projects coming down, the city's growing. Property's worth a ton of money now, more than it has ever been, so, but I still feel that appeals, at least for COAs. Should go to the city council. I mean, after all, we're validating what the staff's giving us, or the applicant besides not to go with the staff's recommendation. Um, that, that, and that may be the worst situation, is if the staff doesn't go. The applicant doesn't go to staff recommendation, we side against them, then they can appeal at city council.
Kind of what Kim said, you know, like, I I kinda wanna take an opposite, um, stance, like, cause I agree with you on like consistency and. Um, across the board, um, but it's something I said when we were, um, going through the hearings on, um, the downtown district. Like, when we made our recommendation to the city council, and, um, I remember saying to folks that, um. Cause you said, you know, private property, it's their private property, and I get that. But on the other hand, like, with these historic buildings, like, they're temporary stewards of these buildings, you know, like. We want these buildings to live on, and they're gonna have multiple different owners over time, so they're kind of, um, in charge of. You know.
They're stewards, basically.
Yeah, like, they're gonna, they're gonna pass it on to somebody else who's hopefully gonna take care of it and pass it on to somebody else and and can, you know, continue that. Process, but, um, there really is something to be said for that, you know, yeah, I I get you're the the property owner. But you're one in a long line of of people, since this building was built in eighteen ninety or nineteen ten or whatever. And so, you know, you're just, you're part of the history, you're part of the story of the building, and so. You know, that's what we're here for, is to ensure that people take care of those buildings and. And, yeah, that there is a process and that they are heard, um, I mean, their opinion matters, they pay taxes and. It's it's their building for a time, um, but we wanna ensure it's it's here for. You know, three generations from now and five generations from now.
As much as I agree with Kim and Rick, everybody, I I I like to look at everything, well, you guys know this. I like to look at the eyes of a second grader when we look at this stuff, as an applicant, it's kind, I think it's kinda confusing if you say. Uh, I'm looking at a quasi judicial board, but they don't all operate the same. I I think if I'm an applicant, I wanna know that a quasi judicial board, either I can appeal their decision to city council, or I can't. I can either appeal it to the courts, or I can't, so I think it's. And I totally agree with these guys, but I also think that if you're a quasi judicial board, the rules should be the same across the board. For all those boards, if you, you know, can only appeal to the courts in one quasi judicial board. Then you should only be able to appeal to the courts and all the others, that's that's my look on it, so. And I don't know how you fix that, because I I agree with Kim and I agree with Rick, we do. Our decisions are based on what the criteria is and what the staff has given us. But I do remember a few years ago when there was an appeals made, and I remember thinking afterwards, we did our job, and it didn't matter. And then it went to the city council, and the city council overruled us, and and I just remember thinking, well, that was wrong, that it didn't matter that we had done our job. So I'm a little biased on that, so I, I think if you're gonna say quasi judicial boards should go to the courts, then it should be across the board. Or it should be quasi judicial boards appeal to the city council across the board, so that didn't help you at all, but that's my opinion.
This is why we're having this.
I think you have to look at what what those two cases were, and did they really meet the standards? I wasn't on a board at the time, but I'll tell you when I heard about it, I couldn't believe you guys did that.
And boards will make bonehead decisions like that in the future.
And I'm sure I've made one too. That one, that one, I knew it was gonna be bad for historic preservation.
But the but the process was that we, we did our job, and then it was like, well, why did we bother? It it didn't matter, it got appealed anyhow, and this, and and that really, like I said, that really doesn't matter, I just think that if you're a quasi judicial board. It should be the same rules for every board. And and that's coming from somebody just looking in at the process, if I were to look at the the city, um, website, look at the boards. It would be confusing that, oh, this board has to appeal to the city council, or this board you appeal to the courts, so.
So, I, if I could, I'd like to back up something Laura said, that I like this concept of. A policy of what is most, what's what's easiest for an applicant to follow? And I really like what you said about what's cheapest for an applicant to follow, because, and putting those together, I I like, yes. I'm sold on your notion that it's better to appeal to the council, because it's it's a, it's a great burden, unless. As a policy, we want to burden applicants, and I don't think so, so, uh, so actually, I'm I'm sold on your idea, but it's it's easier to appeal to the council.
I'll weigh in really quickly on that, cause I think they talked about numbers at planning commissions, so where the cost comes in is if you get a lawyer. So whether you have a lawyer to go in front of council, or you have a lawyer to go in front of the courts, that's what's gonna cost you. You have less appearances in front of council, so if the attorney's charging by appearance. But as far as actually filing the case, I think what you guys have, the city is more expensive to file the appeal. Um, whereas to file it in court, if they're doing it pro se without an attorney, is gonna cost close to nothing. So it really comes down to if they feel they need to be represented in front of council versus in a courtroom, that's where the cost is gonna be. And maybe more people would go to council without an attorney, but I think that's hard for us to say, and since it's kinda something. It's weighing pretty heavily.
So maybe this is some fact finding, but as a policy, whatever, whatever burdens the applicant less. For me, for me personally, whatever burdens the applicant less, whatever that might be, I don't know what that would be, but.
And by applicant, appellant, whatever burdens the appellant last.
So what raises my concern is when we bring economics into this, and I know there's a lot of economic pressures. And in historic preservation, we don't wanna deal with the economic viability of the project, we get into trouble. And if all was set up fifty years ago to avoid that, they knew economics was an issue, that's why they created tax credits. To offset those economic issues when restoring historic buildings, but now we have a very vibrant downtown. And there's a lot of businesses coming here, and they wanna do a lot of things, and we have some vacant land, and, um. How do you balance the economic viability of the project against preserving our historic resources? Now, one thing the board does now is, our downtown's an evolving downtown, it has been evolving for hundred and thirty years. Um, however, we have this new historic resource that most people don't quite understand, called Mid Century Modern. And it's injected into part of our downtown, plus going to Littleton Boulevard, none of those properties are protected, except for the two in the downtown district. Um, but people look at those buildings, they're a little harder to remodel in many ways and do something to, because of the way the architecture is. And what I'm concerned, I've heard some projects coming, but I'm concerned about how do we, what is the economic priorities of the city? And, um, how do, does the city promote that historic preservation is a very positive economic driver? It's not a negative economic driver, um, there are people who will. Come to historic districts to do their projects, cause they, and they know it's gonna cost more, but they also know that their back is covered. They're protected by the regulations from what their neighbors can do, and that's a conflict that we may get into on a potential project.
And, uh, I don't mind if I take a shot at that, uh, we just hired a new historic preservation planner. Yeah, uh, Scout Turnbach. Great, yeah, we're very excited about, uh, her, uh, filling the the shoes that, uh, that Andrea left. And, uh, one of the things, you know, uh, one of the projects for twenty twenty-three that we need to. Get a good start on, if not complete, is a historic preservation plan, and you'll be involved in that, of course. But, uh, you know, we were, Scout and I were just talking about, you know, the work plan for twenty twenty-three. And what we can accomplish, and and we emphasize that very point, uh, I think we need to re-educate. Uh, city staff and, uh, property owners within the downtown area. About the benefits of historic preservation, and to to your point. Uh, I don't think people realize how, uh, what an economic benefit historic preservation has. There's been studies on this, so it's not a a matter of conjecture or opinion, there's studies on it. And, uh, we need to, uh, re-educate, uh, various members of of staff. You know, there's been, uh, you know, staff changes occasionally, and there's been staff changes, and downtown owners changed. Now there's a new downtown district, and and it's incorporated more property owners. We need to really, uh, embark on a program in twenty twenty-three where we talk about that very subject, so, sorry.
No, I I can just add, I think, you know, with the qualifier that we can't speak to future councils. Economic goals, that was your question, you know, I certainly know that as we're also gearing up in twenty twenty-three for this economic development. Plan, we, you know, we have that new team in place, I've heard since day one that I'm, that I was here. How they are eager to, hopefully, if the, you know, the plan kinda shakes out. Um, emphasize the opportunity in our corridors for Mid Century Modern. Because it's so unique, and it's something that will distinguish, you know, uh, Littleton from other places. Um, so, you know, for what that's worth, I think the city's goals at this point are to, um, make. Uh, historic preservation, es- especially in those those corridors. Um, you know, of a s- a stronger goal than perhaps it it has been. Um, so, if that helps, I don't think the council's made any formal pronouncement on that yet. But, um, that's kinda where I see things going.
As you mentioned to me, and it's all, everyone in here knows, everyone loves historic preservation till you have to do it. That's the part, that's the risk where you get into trouble, is the having to do it part. And we've been talking, and Littleton is historic for the last sixty years, hey, actually, it goes even further than that. It goes to nineteen fifties, they started talking about Littleton as historic, and it took a long time to get to a downtown district. That was actually legitimately defined according to law, which was two years ago. And bigger than anybody ever thought it would end up being, because we ended up including Allos. Chris.
I was just gonna say, um, I've been teaching a class at UCD on historic preservation and context. And, um, I I did a tour of two groups of students from another professor's, um, classes, and then. There was another student who couldn't make it, and so I did another tour, like, a week and a half ago or two weeks ago, and, um. And Rick, you know Bonnie Clark, Clark, Dr. Bonnie Clark, she's a, I don't know if you know her, yeah, and then her wife, um, is the professor. Uh, at UCD who had the preservation class, and so they were with me on the tour with the student. And at the end, Kathy was like, we need to be coming to Littleton more, like, there is so much down here. She, and Bonnie was like, I saw three shops, I wanna go do Christmas shopping at, they have lunch in downtown, like. They, like, after the tour, they were like, there is so much here, like, I've forgotten how much I enjoy it, and and that just, like. It's like, wow, that's really neat to hear, and and Kathy already said, like, I wanna do this again next year with my class and have them come to Littleton. And, um, and we've talked about, you know, downtown versus the Mid Mod Mile, and and, you know, which one to do. Um, or should we do both, uh, kinda thing, but people love our downtown.
Was it only three?
Well, you know, it was, we were like against the clock, but it was just, you know. And they've come to, they were like, oh, and, you know, we saw that show in the town hall, the theater, and we need to come back and see another show, so, you know, there's just. You know, oh, people love our downtown, and and when I had the other students, you know, they were like, this is such a cool place, and. And explaining all the different preservation angles, and, you know, talking about how the district was expanded. Talking about tax credits and, um, rehabilitation versus remodel, and, you know, we talked about pliable. Um, the COA that we had on that one, and, um, it was, like, they really enjoyed it, and they learned a lot. And, like, I'm coming back, um.
That's great.
And and to talk about the Penny Robin Building, you know, and how that's gonna evolve, and and things like that, and Palenque with the gas station behind it. And just kind of all the different aspects of of preservation that we deal with.
Yeah, I think that, to your point about, um, uh, we need to just re-educate. Um, on preservation, and that that is, that is, that statement will always be true. Um, because, uh, you know, people change, um, you know, there will be new council members. There will be new staff members, there will be new board members, there will be new property owners, there'll be new people coming to to Littleton. And just, it just really, um, impressing upon people, you know, why we love this, it's because it's real. It's authentic, people know real and authentic, and, but, you know, preservation is is not intuitive. And, um, it is something that needs to be learned, and it is something that that needs to be re-emphasized. And and that will always be true, this is an ongoing process, but it's it's an enjoyable process, people enjoy learning about it.
I was gonna say, I feel like we as the HPV should be involved in a lot of that, um. You know, being willing to take people around downtown, or, you know, do a, a training and and, um. Share our expertise and knowledge of of the city and and how to make things happen.
As a a commercial, board chair, Cronenberger, will be hearing from our our economic development director. If he hasn't told already about, um, how we can directly have conversations with. If he hasn't al- already about um how we can directly have conversations with, with this group. Tours, perhaps. For some of that to happen as we're, we're putting this uh economic development plan uh together. So, uh I'm certainly hoping that we can have, that our staff can learn more. Because as, as we talked about, um we had, had coffee, I think we need to make, we do need to, to keep the learning and the, that connection going. So that, yes, there are requirements, developers, even those who wanna, you know, really capture what Littleton's about. Are gonna have some, some challenges uh potentially with their, their concepts kind of melding their, their concepts with some of the re- requirements. I, I won't say but, I'll say at the same time, um I think our staff, you know, can be as sharp as, as we can in helping them, because the economic development staff is all, is often the first to meet with prospective businesses. Uh and the more that their, that their uh vocabulary and narrative about Littleton and history can uh kind of dovetail with yours and the code from the start. And if they're confident in that, I think the better the outcome will be. So, I have no uh disillusion, no illusions that it will always be easy. But I'm hoping that uh this group can help some of our new staff, y- yours truly in, 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 you know, included. Learn how, but the, how our, our language can, can best facilitate the outcomes that we're looking for.
So the D D A can be a great opportunity to do this, since it encompasses the entire downtown. Then we have this little zone in the middle, which is actually, I was walking around again the, yesterday, the other day downtown and looking at how, how much land's incorporated in between Allops and Main Street, between the alleys, there's a ton of land. But it's not everything that's historic, there's still stuff to the south. But the change that has occurred be, in the downtown has been phenomenal. And it's hasn't, it's not slowing down as far as I can tell. So, there's an opportunity there with the D D A, but that doesn't help Littleton Boulevard at all.
Okay, so I hate to be cringy on this. But we're wondering a little far off. Well, you know, the, the topic is. And we do have, uh, we will have study sessions in the future on the work plan. So I, I don't wanna, um, you know, if somebody's tuning in, uh, we don't wanna wander off. Sorry, I'm sorry, there's my cringy.
Back online.
Yeah, I'm back online. Can you share with us what the cit- what the thoughts in the city council were about this and the planning commission? Cause you've, you've had this discussion with them.
So, city council, when we brought it to them, uh their biggest thing is just consistency and clarity. So, whatever's decided, but they really wanted to hear from the planning commission on their aspect of it. Hear from H P B on their aspect of it. Again, you know, I.
Yeah, I would just say though that they're, I think they're open to, you know, I've kind of enjoyed the conversation about local context. And the fact that if there's a, a city, if there's a recommended step for city council for this group. It doesn't, you know, the applicant could still um get to the courts, you know. And so I, I think, I think the council, while they, they said, yeah, you know, we like the, the, the consistency idea. Um I think they'd be open to some rationale for why it could be different if this board feels that way. But I think, you know, Jen's right, that, you know, they, they listened and they, they said, they're, they're most focused, I, I think, on those planning commission, big project decisions. So that's where they were, were focused and they did speak to consistency. But they also were kind of, I think, intrigued by the, by what this group would think about the, the local context perspective. And whether there should be council step, so.
What was interesting when I watched the planning commission discussion was that we actually make more decisions than they do. That's what seemed to come out of as far as the final, we don't make the final decision, but the final recommendation. It seemed like we, from the discussions, we do things that we do is more definitive than what the planning commission did. And that was an interesting discussion that I saw there. I don't understand where that went, but it went on an hour and a half, you know you were there, so.
That's why Mike was just cringing.
They, that we make more recommendations, not decisions?
Well, we don't, no, no, no board makes a decision, do we, or?
Uh, yes, uh, there are. Yeah, there are decisions made.
So we have three basically, demolition, which we haven't done, and economic, which we haven't done. We don't want to do that, and then COA.
The, the adoption of the new code, a lot of rules have changed. You know, the, the planning commission used to make more recommendations of approval for rezonings, uh plan developments. Yeah, some of those have really, really changed with the new code, so.
Well, speaking of that, I mean, the, the other reason that, that I think we might, personally, I might not want to go to city council and just go to courts. Is that you've also changed what you bring to us. There are now decisions that the staff makes that, that, that don't need board recommendation. So that's another, another way to look at it too, is maybe. I don't know, that's, that's changed also. We just, we don't have the same sort of things that we have to look at like we used to. So it's another thing to look at.
And uh this board is a, uh makes appeal decisions of administrative decisions. And we haven't seen a lot of that yet, uh so will planning commission. So, yeah, there's, there's definitely new roles.
Yeah, we could, we could appeal decisions by the staff on the window, right? I mean, we set up, but we, what we wanted to do is take all that out of our board, cause we trust the staff to do it. Make it easy for property owner and everybody else. So they know what they can do to a property without coming to us. With us, it's gonna be additions and mainly additions, just tremendous remodel. I would say on the three things, the one thing that, that we should allow go to the courts is the economic. Because.
Should or should?
Should go to the court. The bar to, to meet economic distress is extremely high, set very high for a long time. When you look at what's required in there, all the, I mean, costs of the property, you gotta do all this evaluation and stuff. If they were presented to us, um I just feel it'd be better, whatever decision we made. Let the courts sort out whether they're, the projects that can not be viable based on what the applicant's saying versus the city council. Cause when it comes to the technical stuff, I just look at what, what's in there and then I can see with the city council, how are they gonna make a decision? End up with a political decision they have to make, you know, when it comes to economic distress. If we have one that's economic, it means we're gonna lose a significant resource. That's, that's why it's gonna come to us, because someone wants to tear something down that's very significant. That's how they would justify it. That's the only one that they would do. We don't ever want to go there. The bar was set in the model code very high, just for that reason. Cause it's easy for someone to come and say, oh, I just can't afford to do it, I'll prove it, right? And of course, people who buy property speculatively, or someone buys a piece of property. So, they don't understand what the codes are, uh they made maybe a bad decision. But you can't tear the building down because they made a bad decision buying the property.
But isn't.
That they can't make it work.
I, I'm, I'm just following along, so I wanna tear something down, I'm going because I feel like it's gonna be economic hardship. Go to the H P B, you go, we looked at our, we looked at the numbers according to uh the rules, you don't qualify. That person goes to the council, isn't that actually a good thing? Cause the council's going to say, okay, well, they, they followed the rules, they didn't do it capriciously, you lose again. I mean, uh, that's how it's supposed to work, right?
Yeah, but our decision's based on significance and, will be on significance and integrity according to historic preservation criteria. The economic side is a developer proving that they can't, they can't preserve the building, that's what, what happened.
Add to that with uh, I, in my opinion, those rule one oh six. We, staff, uh speaking of staff as a whole, do a great job in protecting you against arbitrary capricious decisions. Your, you know, the, the criteria are listed in the resolutions. And that's really what the courts are looking for. Did they consider the criteria? Is it written, is it in the staff report? Uh did they make their decision that way? And so I, I think there's a relatively high bar uh to go uh through the court system. You know, I don't have a lot of direct experience with it, uh but typically, the best you can hope for through a ru- rule one oh six is for the courts to say, you know what, uh, uh you didn't use your, your criteria properly. Do a new try, do a new uh public hearing and use the criteria. And that's almost the best you can hope for. So it's, it's a, you know, for those economic decisions, uh it, it's a pretty high bar. And, and one I think that staff really does a good job in, in addressing.
That's good, okay. We're thankful for that.
To our attorney.
So Mike is taking good notes. Kind of relay that on to, to council.
Do you want me to summarize what we heard very quickly? So there were several different uh things that we heard, but basically there may be some benefits to having the city council look at the H B B decisions in particular. The decisions of boards and commissions should be treated the same between boards and commissions. So, you know, as a, as an applicant, you should be able to uh have the same appeals process for whichever board or commission you're, you're appealing from. Uh economic hardship uh is one decision that should definitely go to city council for appeals. Should not, oh, thank you.
COAs, I think, COAs.
COAs should go.
Sorry, I'm glad, this is why we do this, to make sure that Southernland understands what everybody actually says. And uh it's important for, let's see, the other thing I heard was that it's important for the uh whoever, wha- whatever burdens the appellant less is uh what's important. So, uh those were, uh in general, we, we talked about a lot of different things and I may not have got the wording, wording exactly right. But uh hopefully that captures uh, you know, the, of the, the discussion.
Just because I'm gonna be the one to have to kind of help counsel with some of this. Could we, if, if we can put the finer point, just the, for the one concept, and I know that we had some countervailing kind of uh feedback there. But for the principle of some decisions may benefit um from a council appeal. I, I heard discussion about that, uh or some value for the, the local context and economic context. Are, are those, can we, can we give that feedback? That those were, those had some resonance with the uh chair or were there others? Of, of those of you who, who kind of felt that way, um what were the reasons that that might be appropriate?
Well, I think there is a definition issue with what local context was meant, when that word goes up. To me, I'm thinking historic context, but you're talking a different kind of context.
Right, I'm talking about big picture.
Big picture context.
So.
Using that word, uh we have to be careful because one of the downfalls of preservation, if you don't have a defined context in order to make your decision against, you're, you're in a really weak position. So, like all words, it's the definition that's being used, so.
Is there a different word? I just wanna make sure that we're, that the, the council hears why that might be desirable.
So, yeah, it, cause the local had nothing to, the preservation had to do with the big picture of Littleton, right? That's what I think the council was saying.
Yeah, I, I think that um because context is one of those words that um in preservation, it has a very specific meaning. And you write a context, and, and we have done that for the downtown historic district, and it's, it's great. We should use it. But um, but it's also, uh it, it's, it's one of those things like community character. When you talk about local context, all of a sudden you've, it, it becomes squishy. And you've opened up, you know, I'll talk about my context and then Laura can talk about her context. And um, and, and it's, it's the kind of thing that's up, up for debate and up for interpretation. And we try to, to uh base decisions and um evaluation on, you know, things that are, are more solid.
If we set that word aside, context. Couple words, or big picture. I guess I'm not sure if the, if this board feels like those are reasons that, that, that it should go to the council for an appeal or if they're not. The big picture interests, the big picture economic. Uh are those re- are, are those reasons that, that you'd like to not see it go, go to the council or that it should?
I think if we met, our, our criteria is well-defined. If we meet the criteria, the city presents the document to us with the criteria outline. And it's gotten more detailed over the years than it has in the past. And we agree to that criteria, I don't see a problem with the city council, because they have to use the same criteria. The other, the big, bigger issue that the council's dealing with is just the total economic development of the city. And how does that impact the few buildings, we have a lot of buildings actually, but the downtown, we could talk about downtown, cause that's really where it is. Got eighty-six buildings in downtown, a lot of space in there and a lot of interest by people. And that's context in there, it comes in a different, it's different than, you know, you know, total development of downtown. What kind of pro- buildings do you want, where do you want, what do you want people to do? Still have a lot of land downtown that can change the feeling of a little bit significantly, so.
If you have a clarifying question, if you had to sum it up in like a couple key concepts, why you would say, no, don't send them all to the court. Maybe these few H P ones make more sense in front of council, what would your reason be?
I would say because these are local businesses, in many cases, they are part of our community. And.
More, more local knowledge, perhaps?
When the local knowledge has to do with the ambition plan, which the community as a whole, not just the downtown, identified these resources as being important. And the council has to address that ambition plan. Councils can change consequently, but they need to understand too, the importance of all this in the context of the whole city being developed. Cause they're, they're looking at all these projects everywhere, and right here we've got, and a little overlay in downtown with what a lot of people perceive, reality or not, it's very difficult to deal with. And I know from what I heard, the council members, they don't understand this either, so I talked to them, I know we don't understand. It's hard.
I think that helps, thanks.
May I ask a question, a, a, as far as um the, the, the local, the big picture, the economic situation? How, i- i- can you give me an example, just kind of a, a straw man example of, of a project? That, that, that there might be other overriding considerations rather than looking at, you know, i- i- in a historic district? If the building, if, if the project meets the criteria, which is pretty, pretty stiff. It, it either, it does or it doesn't, really.
It's not a personal opinion, it's either does or it doesn't.
Right, and is, can you give me an example of where council might?
Mike actually has a pretty good example.
Not sure, but uh, let's say uh downtown, there's a building that somebody wants to demolish. And it has to go through a COA. And uh you make a determination that the COA is not, does not meet the, the standards.
So they can't tear it down according to it?
So they couldn't tear it, they don't get the certificate of demolition. Then uh, an, an applicant, uh let's say there are some other goals of the, of the city that may uh, may factor into, uh you know, the, the decision criteria are the same either way. But let's say this uh provides, uh, you know, let's get away from economics for, for a change. Let's say it provides affordable housing, which is a goal of the city. And, uh, there is, uh, you know, there's always different ways to interpret, um, the, the, the standards. You know, there's, there may be, it's close, you know, on a, on a particular, uh, uh, Secretary of Interior standard. And the, the H P B is really focused on, on that one interpretation of that standard. Whereas, you know, the city council may have the general welfare of the city to look after as well. They say, well, we could interpret that stand, you know, we will hear what the historic preservation, historical preservation board had to say. And is there a wiggle room in that standard that we could determine? Well, we get this affordable housing project that also meets some of the general welfare goals of the city. Is, uh, is that a appropriate example?
I'm just saying that with that, may they have local reasons to interpret it differently and therefore apply the criteria differently to say whether you had sufficient evidence or not is where I think that could come into play. Per the rule, they still have to follow the same appellate standard. But could some of that context or behind the scenes reasoning play into some of that? Sure. Um, maybe less likely to happen at a court, right? Where they're not going to weigh in that kind of context. I think that is the kind of example where it would be like, oh, maybe not.
There is way better.
Dancing on the head of a pen there. You did better.
No, but that was, that was good.
I think it's, I, I think it's, it's, it's leaving room. I think as, uh, Rick was talking, you know, for some of the interpretation or the local, I'm not going to say context, but some of the bigger picture interests, concerns that the city council might have that, that are not as present with some other, you know, the big developments for, for, for planning commission. I don't know that we can speculate too much on, on what those might be.
No, we can't, but what determines a decision, and we haven't dealt with this and that's why I made those two statements last meeting, is significance and integrity. The higher the significance and higher the integrity, the, the more we're, everyone's going to be concerned about saving the building. And so that has to factor in to each project. I mean, the last project we just did, which the board agreed to go forward, um, was a very low significant, low integrity project. And I don't, I didn't, personally, I would have liked to seen a different addition on there, but I saw what the board was doing. And it didn't matter because it's part of, and we view it as economic development downtown. We haven't seen anything like that. We like to see these buildings, but there's other buildings that are very significant. And it's not just the board that's going to stick up for those. It's going to be the community too. So it does become highly political, but that's why city council gets elected, right?
But the criteria is still the correct.
But we, but we're following the criteria.
Right.
You're just saying, potentially, if I can ask, that the stakes are maybe higher with economic hardship and or now you're saying demolition as well versus a COA seems pretty clear.
The higher the significance of the property, the harder it takes. And we have a whole variety on the street. And the problem is, short of, it's century modern, we don't have good significance statements for a lot of our properties. We do for all those buildings, but we haven't done them for the downtown buildings yet. If a building's a landmark, that's a whole different story. It's already high significance. So, but the downtown, it's, and we know, we know, we know the significance of the buildings downtown. From our survey, but just because we know it, doesn't mean that it applies to a COA. And how we, we do the, our decision making because it hasn't been defined really well. We just have a couple of spreadsheets, but not all buildings are equal downtown and we know that. We, we, the board knows that. We talk amongst ourselves. We know what we'd like to see happen. We just.
Well, when we evaluated the buildings, you know, we talked about all of them individually.
That's right.
Rated them all out and.
Are they contributing or are they going to?
Yeah, yeah.
We did integrity and not integrity and, you know, but we didn't get into significance too much. We did the integrity part.
Right.
Well, I think we, uh, kind of got what we need and really thank you. And more. Uh, Jennifer's just going to wrap up with where, uh, where this is going. So let's see kind of.
Yeah. So the timeline that we have set right now is we'll actually, um, we're going to go back to, to planning commission kind of with the, the recommendations. I don't know if we want to insert another city council study session or not, um, based on discussions here. But the plan right now is, um, on January ninth, that we would take this to, to planning commission with the recommendation and the proposed red lines. And then right now we have it tentatively scheduled for our first reading with council on the seventeenth of January. So as well, it's tentatively scheduled.
So the appeals section in ten would be moved out. So that will just leave one little portion, the landmark portion.
Well, to see what staff's recommendation is. So in the staff report, we will include what, uh, the planning commission discussion was in the study session, what the city council discussion was in the study session. And then we'll have a, a recommendation. So there could be a variety of different ways that, that, uh, the text could be the suggested amendment to the text. And then through the public hearing process, uh, the boards and city, the planning commission and city council will have an opportunity to see what the study session results were and make, uh, uh, possible changes to staff's recommendation. But there could be a variety of different ways that goes.
Only ask, cause I was trying to, I tried to go into the court. I tried the code. I tried to use a search function. It doesn't get me where I want to go. And I know the preservation is in two spots. Now it's going to be in the third spot. The U L U C part only comes up with the first section. I can't get to everything else for whatever reason. Then I have to open all documents for all the way down. So I just see a confusion if it's spread all over. There is an easy way to, to use a word search to get to each portion.
Uh, we could work with that offline if you'd like.
Oh, I know. I'm just telling you, that's my concern about spreading the code all over there.
Yeah. Cause you want, we want to make it easy for people to look at it and understand the code. And, and to, to explain, if it's in three different places, well, I may not find it then.
Eventually, but.
I mean, I mean, not, not me personally, but an applicant may not find all those different sections. So we have to keep it simple.
Yeah, we want to fix those things too and try and make it as easy to use as possible.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that, that, that in my mind kind of sums it up is, is we want to always, you know, err on the side of the applicant. Because these people are the, the, even though they're the stewards. They are the stewards. They are the property owners. It's their private property. They're the one who writes the checks. So.
Stewards will be more eager to be stewards the easier you make it.
Exactly. Right, right. That, that's really well said.
And we have good stewards in the city actually.
Yes.
Okay. So are we all set?
Yes. Thank you.
Just one thing, the CPI registration.
Yes. Uh, so thank you for the reminder there. We've got, uh, budget for four, uh, members of, uh, historical preservation board to attend this year, uh, with, uh, provisions for hotel accommodations. So, uh, we would like to give preference to those who have not attended recently. Uh, but, uh, you know, the main thing is attendance. So, uh, if, if, uh, Chair, if you'd like to let me know, uh, which four would like to attend, we can, we'll set that up. Uh, we did apply for the grant, so we've got, uh, you know, we're, uh, saving some money for those four registrations. We just need to assign those to names now.
Can I ask a question about that? My work said they would pay for me to go.
Excellent.
Um, but I would like to stay a night up there because it would be easier to, you know, instead of driving to Boulder from here at, you know, six in the morning. So is there anything that, like since my work would pick that up so that other people could attend, is there?
Uh, oh, like, uh, provision to allow you to do a hotel without the registration?
Yeah. Like if I paid the, if my work paid the registration?
I'm not sure that we could separate those out very well.
Okay.
Uh, to just do the hotel without the registration. We could certainly.
You can see what the whole thing costs based on interest and.
Yes.
How it all shakes out and compare that to budget.
We only have three people that can go. We might be able to do that, but if we have four people, then probably not.
Jason, do you want to?
What's the date again?
It's on the flyer.
Yeah.
Eighth and, eighth through tenth?
Basically it's two days. It's not three because there's tours.
Well, the third day is usually like.
You can see it. You can also follow it online. They've got that pretty much wrapped up. You might want to just go to CPI's website, look at the agenda. It's all done. They've got all the sessions to see if they're interested to you. That's.
Understood. Yeah. And I don't want to get in, in the way of anybody else either. Um, uh, let, let me, let me just get back to you. I'll, I'll study.
Laura, are you interested?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not.
She's not interested. And.
I have attended and, um, I'd like to see others go.
I'm interested, but I will also, if the other people need to go, I can go on my own. I've been to like ninety percent of them, so.
And also the, the attendance is important. Yes. Because, you know, I've seen before where people said, oh, I'll be there. I never saw them there at all.
That's the only reason I want to be careful before I say yes. I just want to make sure that, cause I'm interested.
Check dates too.
Yeah.
At first, at, at first clients, I'm interested. I just, I want to make sure that.
And you just don't want to take, you know, and, and another is we have new planners that have not attended.
And we'll have, so this is just for the board.
Okay.
So we will sign three staff members.
Excellent.
So that's, yeah, that's exciting.
Very good.
Uh, but yeah, if, uh, uh, maybe if you could confer with, uh, Chair Cronenberger and, uh, uh, maybe Chair, if you could get back to me with the four names.
I'll send them out to them.
With, uh, well, let's see about the first week in January. Would that be enough time?
Oh, yeah. Send them right away. Yours on.
Yeah.
Mike, one thing you mentioned is maybe we could carpool on a city vehicle.
Yes.
Uh, let's see.
Eliminate the hotel thing. It's a long day, but.
Me, Scout or, um, Jesse.
Right. Cause I'm not sure, sure approved drivers for the vehicles.
Oh, I don't want.
But they do have approved drivers, so.
Why would you want to drive back?
I don't understand.
I'll sleep while you question.
Yeah, if someone's driving with sleep going back. But I mean, that's an option too at the hotel thing, right? Then it frees up for him staying up there.
Yeah, we'd, uh, you know, at least for staff, we'd always prefer that staff uses a city vehicle to drive to, you know, particularly a location like Boulder and, and certainly you'd be welcome to carpool.
Then we could use the carpool lane.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we'd get there fast. Then you can sleep on the way back. We've carpooled in the past.
Yeah.
Next year will be back downtown. It'll be like easier.
Plus it saved on parking too.
Saves.
We have an awesome minivan.
Yes. Aren't you excited about driving that, Jennifer?
I'll talk about city business.
Yes.
Same rules, Rick. Same rules.
We could talk about preservation, not city business right now.
We won't be sleeping. Rick will just keep talking and we'll put you all to sleep.
I'll send a note out to everybody who get a confirmation. I think Paige was interested in going.
I think she was too.
And so she, they have, she has to take time off of work. So she has to kind of work that out. Anyone else who wants to, I agree. I can just watch it online.
I just have to check Brandon's schedule.
Brandon's schedule. Awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, but we definitely would like to fill up those four slots and make sure that whoever signs up attends.
I was going to say, if, if other people have conflicts and can't make it and we need a fourth, then I will.
Yeah.
Take that slot.
Yeah. And we could even, uh, you know, then your work could not have to worry about your registration. We'd be happy to.
Yeah, I can, that towards another conference.
Or you may be able to find another person.
All right. I'll contact, um, Paige, Amy and Brandon and then Jason, you let me know what you get this guy.
I will. Yeah.
Just look at the calendar as well. All right. I think that's all. I announced the end of this meeting at seven.
Thank you.
That's good.
All right.